All three submen are present. The town administrator is present, according to secretary is present, is present. According for the benefit of the town residents, I get Mr. Martell. Thank you. Okay, gentlemen, we have some minutes. One sec.
Yeah, a motion to approve the December 13 regular meeting minutes as amended.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion, gentlemen, on the minutes? As amended.
Good job.
That amendments were minimal. You're gonna laugh on what I found, but not too much. Let's go with her. She's not here. All right, I'm gonna open up for a public comment. Please state your name if you have anything for public comment at this time. I'll start at the back row with Leo. Back row, anything for public comment? Middle rows, public comment? Okay, you're on the agenda, so we'll all sit. And you're on the agenda, so we'll all sit. Okay, I'm gonna close public comment and we'll go right down the agenda. I have a motion to... Do we have $160?
We do.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion, gentlemen.
I'll make a motion per RSA 31:95-B Roman No. 3 Paragraph B to accept the fundraising donation the amount of $160 for Race Across Dunbarton.
Second.
Don, thank you. Good job, as always. Gentlemen, all in favor? Okay. We'll go right down the budget. Don, you are.
Can we start with the planning and zoning one first?
Okay.
It's stapled to the building, so just flip that first page over.
Oh, I want to say congratulations on your additional duties.
On what?
Being a representative. I saw that last week about working with the...
Tactics?
Yes. Okay.
We're supposed to discuss that tonight, aren't we?
Somebody at some point has to do the appointment papers to get them to Central Manhattan Regional if they want me to go.
We do.
Okay. I'm looking forward to the first meeting because they have coffee donuts. They expressed that many, many times. It's gonna take more than that, though. Anyway, do you typically, line by line?
Yeah, that would be the easiest way.
Okay. First line, advertising with the planning board. I decreased that by $150 simply because we don't do a lot of advertising for the planning board. It's mostly for site plan review, which are minimal if we have to do a public hearing for zoning amendments. Accepting the master plan update, that type of thing, so I decreased that a little bit. As you can see on the side, I put the three asterisks with a note at the bottom, but these things that are on here for advertising, postage, and the recording fees are partially reimbursed by the applicants, so we do have revenue offsetting those. Zoning board advertising, I left the same. The secretary for the zoning board, I decreased. I think that number initially included both planning and zoning minutes that Allison was taking. She's doing just the zoning at this point. Postage, I increased slightly for planning board because I'm mailing the packets out to the board members rather than doing everything digital. Zoning postage, I left alone. Supplies for planning and zoning, I increased because I, this year, purchased planning and zoning handbooks for each member, and then I want to be able to upgrade those, I update those each year, so that's why the increase. Fees and services, that's our Central Manhattan Regional Planning Commission membership. It's figured on a per capita basis, $1.15 per capita, and I think it's 23? They figured 28, 23 for a population of 115 per capita, so it's 32, 46 actually. I rounded it.
So we subtract 15% of the population.
Yeah. There you go. The mapping and online query manager, GIS, those are contracted services for the big maps that we update as we add on any subdivisions, lot line adjustments, that type of thing, and the online query. So those are contracted amounts. Recording fees, I left alone. That's a variable, depending on how many applications we have. And engineering costs, the planning consulting, I left alone. We haven't used anything this year. I don't know that we, you know, I talked to Mike Tariff at Central Manhattan Regional to see if we had anything going on with them that I needed to encumber some of that $6,000. He said at this point, we don't, but Lean suggested that I just leave that as it is in case we have, you know, if we bring back the capital improvement, do an update on that or something. And the planning and zoning training, I just, I left that alone. So we have a minor decrease.
I'm happy with the increases. I don't have any questions.
No. No, I have nothing. Does anybody know if we did any planning consulting last year?
Where we had, the consulting we did last year was encumbered from the prior year, so there's still that, what is it that they're doing? They come in?
Master plan.
Master plan.
Yeah, they're working on the master plan for a couple of years.
And I have funds for that contract, still encumbered.
And that's what I checked with Mike, if we had anything outstanding on any other projects that we owe Central Manhattan.
I was just wondering how many years we hadn't used the planning consulting portion of that.
We use it almost every year. This one, this year where we have a strong administrator, I think that you would have the option to reach out to them and say, okay, I'm looking at this record and it's really outdated, it's time that we, you know...
I really want to do some major reworking of our documents, our subdivision regulations and site plan and the zoning ordinance, and most of that I can do on my own, but the technical stuff I will probably want to get there.
But that part is central.
And that's what the consulting...
That part is free.
No.
No, no, no.
We don't get a lot for free. If we do excess projects or side projects like that, they bill us out as a contracted price. We do have them for the $3,246, we do have them to ask questions of and get some minor assistance, but if we're gonna do anything outside of the norm, it's a contracted service. And that's what the $6,000 covered.
Okay. Okay. You're good? Anything else, or are we...
I think that's it on that one. Everybody's okay with that one.
Yep. Now to your actual department.
Building Department, the Secretary of Building Inspection, the change, the actual expenditure is lower than what was budgeted simply because the position was vacant for, I think, three months before I came in, so that's why it's a little lower than anticipated. What I'm putting in there for 2019 is just the, my rate at the 2% increase. Secretary overtime, just leaving that as it is. I never know, it will depend on the amount of meetings that we have and outside, you know. For the building inspector, and I've got an explanation down below. Mike and I have been talking, I've talked to Lean, and I would like to be able to increase his hours, and, but as I was explaining to him, it's not, I would keep him two days, full days, and I would like to budget in an extra day because we don't always have time to do our administrative stuff in the office without him running back out to another inspection or taking calls or somebody at the counter. And also, the budget didn't include any time for him for when he takes the training that Building Officials Association puts on, so that would overrun what was actually budgeted for him. So what I was proposing is his hourly rate times the 2%, and then increasing it to 24 hours instead of the 16 that he's got now. So, and I, as I was talking to Mike, I, you know, I want him to understand this is on an as-needed basis, so if I was out for a sick day, comp day, vacation time, or whatever, I'd have enough budgeted in there for him to cover on a day that might not be his typical day. It'll cover for when I need him in here, which I explained, like through the winter, chances are slim that we're gonna need him to do anything more than the two, two days, but as we pick up again in the spring, then I'd like that flexibility to be able to bring him in, whether it be for a half day on Wednesday, or a whole day on Friday or something.
Now, I see you have a second option down here for $21,050.
Right, because I figured if you guys were, if there was gonna be discussion of 24, was gonna be beyond what you wanted to do in case somebody was gonna ask me, well, what would 20 hours be, so I provided it for you.
Can I just also add that his current average for this 2018 year has been, what, almost 22?
Twenty.
Just shy of 22 a week, just with the needs that we've had for...
When you averaged it.
Yeah. Of all the weeks?
But for the first part of the year before she was involved, she was working many more hours than he should have typically worked.
Right.
So...
That would skew his average.
I was leaning towards maybe sticking with the 20 hours myself, but I don't know what the other selectmen were thinking. Just to make a gradual step up in your budget instead of all...
Right, right. And that's where I had started in the talks with Mike was going with the 20, and then the more we looked at it, you know, he said if we could do 24, great, but again, it would be an as-needed, so I might...
Does he have outside employment? Does he work elsewhere, too?
He does his own septic designs.
Okay, but it's not gonna impact upon his other job?
No.
If I add him coming more hours?
Right.
Okay.
And I, you know, as we talked today about the flexibility, it wouldn't be a specific, necessarily every week, three days, it wouldn't be every other Monday, it might be a half-day Wednesday when my office is closed in the afternoon so that he and I can just sit and, without interruption, do what we can't get to paperwork-wise or updating documents or whatever. He did mention today, just before he got ready to leave, that he would like to consider or have considered payment for mileage, because he's, I guess he, you know, because he's part of Building Association, he's talked with other building inspectors, and either they have a municipal car that they use for inspections and everything, they park it at the place and go home, or they get mileage, and he said, he would like that to be considered. And I didn't have time to really prepare anything, because like I said, it was just before he, he left that he kinda...
Could I ask that, before we go into deliberations on the budget? Could you pass out the lean? In other words, what's his average mileage? And what would you propose on that?
Yeah, so he currently, you were saying that he keeps a log? And today, for example, he had...
He had a couple of inspections, and he said he was about 10 miles, so he figured today would've been a $5 a day, you know?
We would consider that, but I think we just need the data, so we can look at that.
Right, okay, because that's what I said, and I was like, I had no idea, but he has a log that he pretty much writes down all of his inspections, and so that if we have questions here, he can go back through and tell me what day he did, if we missed putting it on our log here or something, so...
I do know other towns that do that, and a fair way to do it is to use the government rate typically that you can use on your taxes. That way, it goes up and down according to the economy. Deal or take. Goes down.
So those are things, you know, to consider. He does use his own cellphone, you know, that he pays for that, and a lot of contractors have that, and they call him all weekend long, or whenever they need to talk to Mike, they call him and stuff, so he, he does put in a little extra that, you know, he covers on his own, so I agreed that I would bring that up.
Okay, we can respond back to him. Yeah, you definitely could, because there are...
Okay.
Okay, we just need the data.
Okay. The supplies line is, we carry the contract for this printer here and the one in the wide format printer, so those are in the supply line. The trainings, I increased a little bit, just because he ran over a little, and he doesn't, they have a training every month through the Building Officials Association, but we kind of pick the ones that are gonna be most relative to him here in Dunbarton, so I just wanted to give him a little extra buffer in case there's something else that he wants to take, but doesn't wanna have to say, well, I can't because I don't have the budget. And the dues, that's the building officials and different organizations that we do belong to, so I'd let that the same.
Okay. Gentlemen, questions?
Until we start planning the budget.
Okay. I thank Christine for tonight.
Well, my pleasure.
Did you wanna talk on the building inspector's line now, or you wanna bring that up again?
Just for general discussion, I would, I would rather see him go to the $21,000 there and stick with the 20 hours and then work on the mileage thing, because I'm in agreement with using your own card, you should get the mileage running around for the town.
I see a little wiggle room on the supplies, too.
Yeah, so I was thinking, you know, maybe knock that down to 1,500, go with the mileage and then go with the, go halfway on the hours. At least for this year.
Yep.
You'll be here a whole nother year, next year, we'll see how you feel it's going.
Right, right, and that's what I said, I, you know, like you said, he did do a lot of extra hours in the spring when the place was vacant, and with overlap being done, that may really lighten the inspection load, but...
And even with you being here, you answer a lot of phone calls when he's not here that kind of eliminates some of that need, too.
So I think, like you said, the beginning of the year, we're gonna be starting fresh with the two of us being here in a new building season.
Yeah.
So I get a better idea, so...
And you hopefully can have the flexibility to manage.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's my thought on it for your final budget, I guess.
I think when we work on the budget, I'd just like to know an average with the winter time and the summertime.
Okay.
Because things change sometimes dramatically in the summertime, and then we can review those numbers afterwards, whether it's the 21 or, you know, the 24, I mean, it's something we can look at. If we know an average, so what it was last year.
Okay.
And if you have some, and you may be able to add into whether there's a considerable amount of change from last year, looking at what's coming this year. You know, I don't know, you may have some idea what's coming up or...
I wish I had a crystal ball, but...
I think, I think maybe a good way to do your averages, do the month starting maybe one month after you were here.
Okay.
So you're not bringing new.
Right.
One month after. Do those latter months and do the average from there, just say for four months, his average was X.
Yeah.
Because at the beginning of the year, as Lean said, it was much higher, and we needed him. In fact, we increased that portion to make sure that we could cover it.
That's right.
Okay, yeah, because I think, you know, we've been working a lot of things out, and I think we're really making some good progress, so I'd like to keep that momentum going, so...
Yeah, we really like to see your reports when you guys do those.
Yeah.
Tell us what's going on with different projects.
Yeah.
In case somebody calls.
Well, that's just it, everybody knows what's going on if you meet somebody at the post office, and like, that's the resident post office.
At the coffee shop.
Oh, yeah, we don't have that yet either. That's common.
It was, just that the coffee shop was approved for the planning board last night. They made, they passed the planning board, so it was good.
Okay, so you're all set with me?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good holiday.
You, too.
You, uh, you said the coffee shop was approved? Last night, the planning board gave the approval of the coffee shop, yes, so it's making progress. They just got a few more things to get done, and I think they have some requirements, but it's being done. Okay, next thing on the agenda? I'm gonna open up the...
Nope. Oh, is it?
What time is it?
We have John Stevens here.
No, it's 7:21.
Oh, we have to wait.
I'm gonna go to the welfare director.
Jeanne, come on up. We gotta wait till 7:30. I put you down for 7:30. 10 minutes.
Jeanne, if you're, that's 10 minutes, we gotta get you through.
Okay. Lean is gonna help you.
Absolutely.
I'm gonna tell you, since I've come on board, we've had two applicants, and they do qualify for welfare, but we helped them otherwise. Community Action Program, fuel assistance, electric assistance, direct to the food pantry, et cetera.
Yep. You can just run through the lines there. To kind of attempt that?
So you have the 2019?
Yep.
So the Salvation Army Dunbarton, that's $2,000. Community Action was $2,100, and they're asking for $250 more. So that would be a change to consider. And then the welfare director and the deputy, that's a salary item, get a 2% increase, and then the $5,000 is our pool of money.
Okay. The $5,000 is the money that you have to work with?
Yes.
For assistance.
And so the only thing you're really increasing, other than what we've already planned on, was the $250 in the Community Action Program?
Yeah.
And just for the Community Action Program, I just wanna, that's a...
I did attach it to your worksheet?
If you look at that worksheet, this is a great summary of what they, how they have helped it. You can turn to page one, uh, page two, it's labeled page one, though. Summary of services provided to Dunbarton residents. For the small amount of money that we, we contribute to that organization, you can see the actual dollars that they've given out in assistance, they've given out, this one here. For that's, for a small investment of $2,300, we can expect to see approximately that much dollars given to, as part of our group, to our residents. So it's a, it's a huge return on investment, and...
Oh, is that, is that Dunbarton or what's the...
That's strictly Dunbarton.
Strictly Dunbarton.
Yep.
And I think you agree.
Oh, and it went up to $2,350.
Right, so it went, it went up just a little tiny bit, and I think it's...
So everything is fixed?
Yeah. I, I think it's a great program, we should continue that. The only thing I'd like to mention is that the line one, the Salvation Army contribution, if we recall in the past, some of the dollars there went to pay for insurance for the pantry, which is a donor residence.
Yeah.
And so, and the remaining dollars would go to Salvation Army. Right, so right now, we've, it's high, it was $2,000. It's an area agency which contributed, has Dunbarton, Ware, New Boston, Goffstown.
That's it.
And that's our group we're donating to. And what this represents is, let's say, someone comes in that doesn't qualify for welfare under our rules, which we have strict state rules we gotta follow, we can send people to Salvation Army for assistance, like, just because you're, you make too much, or you have too many accidents, you still may need a helping hand, and Salvation Army gives a helping hand out. But the problem is, the $2,000 may be a little bit high for Dunbarton because...
So basically, in past years with the previous welfare director, we kept it at $2,000. It used to be other organizations, the previous welfare director asked us to specify Salvation Army so that the food pantry that she ran was strictly through the Salvation Army, that would give additional revenue to that organization. And by requesting the money go to the Salvation Army, it, it's earmarked, as long as you specify to this unit, the Goffstown unit, then the, the money that's typically pooled for those four towns might be in the $1,000 to $3,000 range, but all the different communities that use the Salvation Army give some kind of donation to the Salvation Army, so, for example, 2018, they had a pool of $7,000, over and above what we have for $5,000, but that's a shared pool. Okay?
So...
Now that we don't insure a food pantry, because that's gone, we only have the food vouchers, which assist for food, gasoline, utilities, um...
Have we ever helped a small pantry we have here locally?
They have a small pantry that they...
At the church?
Right, they, that we, that we tap into as well. They also do the food baskets for Christmas and...
I'm kind of agreement with Mike, that can be reduced to a thousand or whatever, but I was also thinking that I would rather donate to our local pantry.
We could, we could consider that.
You know, like you said, change the title, Lean, so it's not, you know, maybe designate a thousand to Salvation Army.
Yeah.
So we're doing our part in there, and then maybe keeping the other thousand, or maybe make it 500, you know, for some more local, localized needs.
Okay, so can I recommend, from what I've seen over the last 14 years, I first came on board, the welfare directors were not as educated as they are now, and they didn't have the tools and resources to reach out to other organizations to get, to offset the town and local expenses, so that direct assistance aid line was over $20,000, sometimes $30,000 a year, that we would assist local residents of Dunbarton. Since then, they have now developed the application process, the qualification process, other resources, so we have seen that just by going through the protocol and the laws, we are able to better qualify these people, and they're, I think, for the most part, I think we have not had to dip into that.
Right, so we have, we have this down to $5,000, which I think is fine.
Okay.
To keep it at.
Yeah.
I'm looking at the $2,000 Salvation Army, like Mike said.
$1,000 Salvation Army, 500 to our local food bank here in the town. They're both religious organizations, but they do provide direct assistance to Dunbarton.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm leaning towards you, Dave, on that one.
Okay.
And then, and then they'd reduce it by 500?
$500, or we could keep the 500 and...
I would reduce it, I'd move it down to the...
Direct assistance line, because if it's not used within the year, it goes to the general fund anyway.
Yeah.
So it gives her a buffer, you know, $5,000.
Yeah, I was just looking to keep it, but it's very close in the end, so...
So in other words, make that 5,500 on the bottom. Okay.
You'll notice the other one says direct assistance slash vendor others welcome, so...
Right.
If it comes later in the year, we decide to do something more than we could before.
Well, do you have any, any concerns here, or any questions?
Well, I guess I'll reiterate that when we start doing our budget planning itself, is that those are things that we can bring up.
You'd consider it?
Just making notes and, you know...
We'll go from there.
We're getting the numbers from the different department heads.
Okay.
And then when we start working on the budget, these are things that it's worth noting that we're considering, but...
So flag them that there could be potential changes.
Right.
So for 2018's calendar actual Salvation Army, because, again, Jeanne's new, we discussed her budget and discussed the expenditure process, typically, at this point, if we had paid out the insurance for this food pantry, we would distribute the remainder to the Salvation Army. I have not written that check yet. I think, I think it's still a, a positive organization to contribute to. We don't necessarily have to give the full $2,000, but I would like a recommendation from the board to release those funds, or some, a portion of those funds, to the Salvation Army this year so that we could spend down that...
Well, keep, you know, keep a foot in the door, yeah, goodwill towards our residents.
I think we should do, I think we should do a thousand.
Rather than give, spend down the whole line, just spend $1,000.
Correct.
And let the remainder lapse.
Yeah. Going to the down budget, right?
Yeah, that's right.
Who was the insurance?
It was about $700, 681, something like that, yeah.
So...
And then we would give the remainder here.
So if, if they gave the Salvation Army $1,500, if within range, I mean, you're only hitting yourself for $200, I don't see a problem, that's not being problematic.
Yeah, no, the, spend budget...
And in the sense with what you're talking about, if we intercept that on, you know, when we do the budget, so...
So what would you like me to disperse for 2018, $1,000 or $1,500?
Might as well do it $1,500. You're getting, you know, you're getting some consideration with the money, and it takes a lot of pressure off the town, I don't know.
Yeah, they've given, they've given vouchers for residents who didn't really qualify, but they needed a helping hand.
Right.
And so they really did positively affect town residents. $1,500.
We haven't in the budget.
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we approve $1,500.
You're still saving $200, you know?
For 2018 to be transferred to Salvation Army out of the welfare budget line.
Okay.
All in favor? I need a second.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Any further discussion on that?
Nope.
Here in, and all in favor? Lean, that's gonna be changed.
Very good. So I'll send that out this week. If you happen to talk to Bob, he can lend me all that, they can expect $1,500.
And I do wanna say in the cases that we have, and we're very willing to, people that maybe just like qualify, and they're willing to write them, assist them.
Right, well, that's good. Okay, I don't have any more questions of welfare, is there a convenience? Thank you, Jeanne.
Thanks for coming in.
Thanks for coming in.
Drive, care go go home.
Yes, okay.
Okay. Now being the time?
Now being, seven thirty-two.
Okay, seven thirty-two, we have, uh, this is for the solar, um, bid, so, sealed bid for the soul for today project. We only got one bid. Okay. This is Grenace Solar, this is out of Bow. And, uh, since, uh, I don't believe we have such a many experts, we have a committee in town, I would like to pass this off for review by the, by the energy committee, and to get back with us maybe next week.
We were, we were planning on meeting next week and, uh, coming back on the third of January, if that would suit your schedule, but-
Um, yeah.
We talked about it the other night, yep.
Okay.
It gives them a chance to review the materials, look at the numbers, any recommendations or other questions, so.
So it's off to you.
Good.
And, uh, thank you for helping us out there.
Sure.
Thank you for taking your representation.
We're looking forward to seeing you.
Get you down for the third.
Okay, thanks.
It's too easy. Okay. Mr. Moody, come on up.
So Jeff Moody, twenty-five Everett Road, um, and I'm here just to ask for some more specific information about, um, what the specifications of upgrading from a grade six to a grade five road would be. Um, I'm, and I've, I've spoken at length with Jeff as well on this, but, um, this relates to the old Everett Road that got washed out back in the forties. Um, and I'm asking for myself and for Jenna Della, who owns that property and used to own my property that I bought from her five years ago as well. Um, and so, I, you know, I'm, we're discussing potentially me buying that, her property from her, and in order for me to do that, I need to have a better idea of what-
Is it, uh, first lot you'd be looking at?
No, it's all three, so I wanna try to have an understanding of all three, and I don't think that really changes anything in the discussion.
Mm-hmm.
So, specifically, you know, I'd like to understand what dimensions of that would be as far as the road is concerned and those specifications, because, uh-
Have you looked at our class five dirt road specifications from that?
Yeah, I, I've looked online and what I've seen is it, you know, there's, there's a gravel specification and then there is, uh, a fourteen-foot road with two-foot shoulders, so.
Have you, um, have you gone down Purgatory Pond Road lately?
I haven't.
That road was just upgraded from a class six to a class five town maintained road.
But that's town maintained, right?
No, it was, it was accepted by the town to be maintained after-
It's a something, class five is town maintained.
Right, but it was, it was not maintained prior to.
It was class six, just like yours, like this one.
Right, so-
So once they're class five roads, they're maintained by the town?
Okay, so that they are, so that is not something that's an onus on the, the property owners to maintain that road?
No.
It's just that onus is to have the road built.
Correct. And inspected by engineers.
Right, yeah.
So they have the gravel compaction tests and engineering and-
Do you know where Purgatory Pond is? Also, twist, yeah, right by the town line?
All the way to Hootset, more or less, yeah.
Yes, that would be a, a great road to travel, and that was done, it was an A-plus job, and you can see what they did, and it was a, it's a, if you go down that path road, the road that you were talking about now, and, and that end of Everett Road, it's a huge difference. I mean, this is like-
Have you ever been down that?
Yes.
You could call it a road if you want. I wouldn't define it as a road.
Okay.
I mean, it's nice except for the, for the incline, which is all washed out and all I could call it, so that's-
But the thing is, it's a, it's gonna be, there's gonna be some significant preparations on the, on the developer, which would be the developer.
Yep. Okay, so the other question that I had related to that would be, um, with the turnaround specs. And if that road were developed in stages, would there need to be a turnaround built at every stage?
That's what it said in that regulation when I read it, that each time you did a phase, you need a new turnaround.
Okay.
And whether that turnaround is part of the driveway or not, it didn't really specify in there, but that could be a sufficient turnaround for our road agent to be happy to turn a town around.
Yeah, for sure, so, I mean, but that is a, that's an important question, whether it could be part of the driveway or whether it has to be part of the actual road with the turnarounds. So, I mean-
You see, it didn't specify in there, but again, at the end of Purgatory Pond, opposite his driveway, he did a turnaround that was of, a size that was agreeable to the road agent.
So that's another question, because opposite of the property in question is town property.
So it'd have to be done on that side of the property, let's say.
So the town has no in, interest in that property being accessible at all? And even though that property, from what I understand, the town isn't planning on developing at all, there's no, would there be any, would there be any possibility of that turnaround being built on that side?
I think there's a recreational easel on that side.
Ken can attest to this, they went through a subdivision process.
I can answer that.
Yeah.
We went to agony trying to get that town land, first it was proposed by the developer deal, mainly a wetlands mitigation thing, that was not the understanding. We rescind, they rescinded it at the state, and that land was, was to remain as town land, not conservation land for something like a ball field, if you could put one there. It should be made accessible in conjunction with any development.
Yeah, and just, I, I-
There's also hiking trail that's attached to it.
I wanna make it clear that I'm not necessarily looking to develop the land. I actually wanna make it accessible for like mountain biking trails and stuff like that. But, but if I'm going to purchase the land, I need to have a clear understanding of, if I were to resell that land, you know, what that entails as far as whether that buyer would be able to develop that land, what that, you know, those sorts of things go with-
Which land are you talking about, the town land?
No, not the town.
Just your land, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The land, yeah, it's always a price.
But I mean, the, I'm just talking about the town land on the other side.
Sure, yeah, and so, you know, that's why I was asking the question, because if it's not being used, I was curious to understand whether a turnaround could be just a single turnaround or if it had to be built actually on all of that land, that's-
I wasn't really sure, Laura Reed threw some division stuff. If the final, what the final intent here was, was it gonna remain to be a class six road or was it gonna become a class five town?
It would, if, if it was developed, it'd have to be, uh, developed as a cla, the developer would have to bring it up to a class five standard and then it would be accepted by the town. That's what I'm, that's how I would simulate it, like any other development, is like to, well, no.
We did have other private roads in town, that they were made to go up to a class five town standards, but they did not become a town road. And right at the end of Mansion Road, there's a development that goes off to the right that is still private, but that road, because there were several houses on it, was brought up to a class five road.
Yeah, what are we talking about?
That's a private driveway, and that was what they required to do to build, have the-
Just like this, yeah.
Just like this requirement, there's three lots down there, and that road was made to a class five town standard and stayed private.
Yeah, but that seems like the exact definition of what this is, which is three lots that are looking for access, basically.
Right.
The only difference is, this is on a class six road today.
Right, which is that one, that one was a road.
You could buy it today, and you have access to those lots, so a class six road. You can't get a building permit the way they are today. But you could own them, you can have access to them. Anybody in this room can go up and down that road, it's a, it's a town road. But what's triggering the improvement is the building permit.
So you could, you could buy that property and upgrade the road slightly to use the property without building on it? And, uh, and not have to-
Well, see, I abut with the property, so I don't necessarily have to build a road to access the property.
Yeah, cause there's already a road near property that heads right down through that property.
Right, I go through my pasture, and then there's a logging road, so it's not really an issue. It's just understanding all of the variables with that property, you know.
Right.
Before purchase, just to try to understand that.
Mike, can I add something else?
Please, I was just gonna ask.
In today's day and age, sir, you wouldn't be a, able to do that. That was done in yesterday year, now you would have to develop the road first if you had, if you came to the planning board for a subdivision, so it's a unique situation. By the way, for the, regarding turnaround, it's only my opinion, but you gotta put the turnaround on the town side, in case they ever wanna use it to get in there.
Yeah, okay, use it.
So, and you should, just a recommendation again, you should develop the whole thing at once, you save yourself some money. You have real sellable lots there, it's a good, good area.
Yeah, it's a good area, well, it's a little wet, but, but, uh-
I'm talking, just talking about the road.
No, I mean, the road, I mean, the road, the road isn't that bad. The only problem is the gully part of that road, which is pretty narrow and a bit rough. And so, I've talked with Jeff about it, and we needed to kind of have a better idea of what the definition of that was at all.
I'm still totally confused. Because you can get a building permit on a class six road.
Yes.
We did a subdivision on a class six road, sole subdivision. They were required to upgrade it to a certain dimension and width, maintain it on their own, not town maintained, and they still could get a building permit to do it. When you read through that subdivision decision back in the nineties, at the end of that, it doesn't really say if it's gonna stay class six or if it's gonna become class five.
It just says you have to upgrade it with every step of the way.
Right.
Like I said, that's, that's, that's another, that's another deal that happened way back.
We're trying to figure out what the planning board decided back then, and as you can see, the minutes are a little vague on it.
Mm-hmm.
Not quite as technical as we do today, because we learned from that type of stuff. So, I mean, if-
Like Ken said, it's kind of a unique piece of property, because this wouldn't be allowed to happen in this procedure these days. So, the fact that there is some graces to this already, the town would be probably not willing to add more graces to it, in other words, you know, there's, there's something like, like he said, just developing the one lot with the road and doing a turnaround at one lot, you know, isn't something that they would do on that small of a subdivision nowadays? They could put the whole road in and then, and then have, instead of having three different turnarounds over the life of the land.
What's it like with that, Jeff?
There's two hundred and fifty feet for a lot, and I think lot two and three have twice the distance, so.
Yeah, they do.
So probably looking at six hundred, nine hundred feet, maybe?
Something like that.
Maybe longer, a little bit?
Yeah, maybe a little bit longer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause the lot, the lowest ones-
I didn't know the base of that road down there, once you get past the washout, it's a raised up, it's in fairly good shape.
No, I mean- There's really about two hundred feet of that road, maybe two fifty, which is rough. That sort of incline as you go down, but then it's nice.
And you could see what washed out was good gravel at one time, it wasn't junk gravel, it was-
I'd call it a road again.
Well, yeah. Yeah, so, I mean, I don't know, I, I feel like I need to have, I don't, my worry is that I purchase the land and then the conditions change because they're vague right now.
Yeah, we can't, and we're not giving you any, we're not giving you any good information, are we?
I don't want to have, I, I appreciate the information, but I'd like to have a sort of confirmation at some point of what actually needs to be done.
If we follow our class five, uh, road standards, and again, does it say pavement, does it say gravel?
No, it, it doesn't specify, uh, it just class five.
To give you an idea of what things can cost, if you were to build it to our class five, we enter today, it could cost you as much as two hundred bucks a foot.
Yeah.
So, just to give you a rough idea.
Yeah.
And every job's a little different, but it's just-
When you take that and then you calculate it and bringing electricity into that area, two hundred and twenty-five dollars a foot.
Yeah, this stuff really isn't-
Yeah, so-
The land sitting there the way it is today, really isn't worth a lot.
So what's the next step here?
Where the road is and the, that's what makes it worth the value.
So is the next step to get specs on whether that's gravel or, I mean, I kind of, I feel a little bit lost here.
Yeah, I, what I gave him, for, he called me and we had a chat, and then he was trying to figure out the numbers. And I said, well, you have to, we have to establish some parameters of what that would be for a number. And I suggested that he come to the selectmen, because I said, Dan, the ones that actually overview the roads, this class six road business.
Right.
That is a subdivision, it had some specs, but again, it's kind of loose, and I said, you're kind of gonna make a deal with the selectmen.
Mike, please.
Yep.
Jeff also, we did the CHAM property.
Yeah.
And that was a reduced scope thing, but the whole thing was developed at once. It was a class six road, he divided, he subdivided some lots off it, just like you did, probably a little, a few more.
Five, I think, I'll figure it out.
Five or something, but you're all developed now, you can go take a look at it, Guile Hill Road. Uh, it was a really nice job, but-
Yeah.
Once again, uh, you know.
But going through the planning board process, if you do X, Y, and Z, if you complete X, Y, and Z, this will become a class five maintained road. It doesn't really spell that out, but I could read it in, in this.
So you're referring to just gravel and, and or paving?
Anything, anything, it's two things here, anything that the town maintains is a class five road.
Right.
It could even be up in hill, hills and valleys and puddles.
And substandard.
And substandard. But the thing here is what, you know, as a developer, you know, just to show you the extreme, some developers are putting a road set across a million dollars in this town, just finished one, you know, it's three hundred dollars a foot.
Yeah, two hundred dollars a foot.
The stuff over in Grapevine?
Off of Grapevine, yeah, yeah. So, you know.
I guess, that's what I mean, again- What will you recommend to the strumming, he's looking for, what, what is, what is gonna be required to do, obviously, upgrade it to a class five gravel as a minimum?
The thing here, it is already a subdivision.
Right.
There, and it's only my personal opinion, and I don't know what Jeff thinks, but you gotta, you gotta do the whole job all at once, and you get three sellable lots instantaneously.
Yeah, but, again, what type of job?
I know, that-
But that's what, that's what I'm trying to sort out here. A twenty-four foot paved road?
What if he does it like CHAMs?
Twenty-four foot paved road is not, I mean, I don't know if that's economically viable for the lot.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, I understand where you're coming from, and I agree a hundred percent with you, but that's one of the-
The CHAM job is not paved?
No, that's what I mean, what direction does he go?
Dirt or paved?
You can't, you can't come to the planning board and ask us.
Not anymore.
It's these three gentlemen up here, whoever's up here, to interpret that.
Jeff, would the CHAM design be acceptable in your opinion?
It would be to me, yeah.
And I'm fine with tabling this for a bit, so if there can be some discussion, and I can come back in the new year and we can talk about it, this is not something that needs to be decided right now.
I think, I think that would be a, probably a, a good plan at this action at this point.
Cause it's just a little too vague.
Right, we should probably, I'd like to probably get the, uh, the, the planning board chair, the road agent, and maybe we can have a work session with the, uh, with the selectmen, just to talk about things.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, no, I, I agree. And say, that's why I just couldn't, I wasn't trying to brush it off, but, yeah.
I appreciate the fact that you-
These guys are the keepers of the road.
Yeah, yeah.
I think this would be exactly like the CHAMs project, because they enacted the exact same, is it dead end road?
All right, but you know what's happening, I'm, I'm just a guy on the planning board, it's Jeff and the selectmen really got control of this job.
But you, but you bring some historical background to it, and that's why I wanna tap into it.
Today, you couldn't do what he's, what's happening down there.
And the thing is, and you make reference to the CHAM property, I'm, I'm sitting here ignorant, because I don't know anything about the CHAM property, so I need to be brought into this.
But that was, again, that was-
Class six product, first time.
So the thing is, we can bring that historical basis to the meeting and talk about what's on-
I mean, CHAM property, you're talking about turnaround, you put in a beautiful turnaround for your snow, snowplows, didn't they?
Yes.
At the end, so I mean-
I asked him to, yeah.
And he did, yeah.
All right, so, uh, why don't we get you on the agenda in January sometime? We wanna probably do a work session, maybe for an hour in the afternoon, for the weekend sometime, when it's convenient for all?
That's fine.
Anytime, take a, take a drive down Purgatory Pond, I've just done, so.
And you said Guile Hill Road?
Yeah, top of Grapevine.
Okay.
It's a narrow dirt road, it's a scenic road.
Okay, it's not the, the subdivision, cause I don't see that one.
It's a, it's a gravel road.
So Guile Hill was kept a little bit narrower because it is a scenic road.
Scenic road, yeah.
Okay.
All right, I'll do that.
So you're gonna see a big difference in width when you look at the two.
And, believe me, the, the planning board now does not allow this to go through, I mean, we, we dot I's and cross T's and then we add a few, because, because-
No, I know that there was a bad situation with Tucker Hill, I think, right?
Not a bad situation.
Well, I mean, wasn't there like some issues with?
The, a process they had to go through.
It's all your fault, you live on Tucker Hill.
Hey.
I'm an Everett, I'm an Everett Road guy, we don't like this Tucker Hill place.
The only, the only. Don't tell me, I'll block the road again. I'm sure I'll tell you. Block the road again.
So, Jeff, just so, let's go to Guile Hill Road, the first like five lots on both sides of the road.
Is that? Yeah, the stumble block, cause his old house right there.
Be a skew in the road so the lights didn't shine in there.
Make it very narrow because they're privately owned, it wasn't until after the wines.
She's gone. We're gonna mess up the law.
That was called on the right hand side, the owner of that property.
Okay.
And then the wooded section is another large parcel that, that person will have to.
Yeah, so don't get, uh, don't get misrepresented when you go down there, it starts out very narrow, cause that's not.
No, that's probably all, keep going.
It's gonna be more like the Purgatory Road.
It really came out nice, it's similar to Purgatory.
All right, okay, just one last thing, is it, as an owner of that land, what's the grade there, Jeff?
Oh, I, I don't know.
More than eight percent in places, pretty steep.
No, it is, it is.
But the point is, you've got some advantages already, just because you own the land, you have, there is a plan on file, but, you know, you've gotta do something to enhance it. So, if this town takes it over, then it works right for this.
It has to be reviewed by an engineer as well.
Sure. And, you know, I've, you know, I've, I've discussed and I've walked the property with Dan Marin too, who lives on Tucker Hill.
Yeah.
And he kind of knows the stuff too, so I'm just trying to do this and, you know.
I'm sorry, when I'm really giving you really concrete information, I'm not bad with, but it all kind of came about as a surprise.
Early in the process.
It was on the books, but forgot about it.
Yep, we'll get there, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And those minutes are online to the CHAM.
Oh, are they?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll check those, thank you, good night, good holiday.
You too.
So, it's not June? Uh, maybe we can get January, mid-January sometime, or mid-afternoon, if you're in town.
Yeah, it's okay with me, I'm just a visitor to this thing.
No, I know, but the thing is, I'm gonna use your historical background and.
We kind of hit a home run with Brian Orville's project.
Yeah, that was dumb luck.
Because, no, it wasn't dumb luck.
No.
Brian was on the planning board, Brian's, works for Premier Road Builder, and when you say classified road standards, Dan, he opens the book up, he knows what they are, he knows where it stands, and that's what he did. No questions asked, when I met with him and the selectmen down there, after we had our, our town meeting to accept it, brought it up to standards, he said, this is what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna go to our class five standards. Everything up, ready to pave, but no pavement, and that's what he did.
But as, as I recall though, the selectmen at the time made some specific recommendations, uh, from the road agent, and we documented them, said things were to be done.
He was, yeah, it, that was, that stuff was, he was on board.
We, we held it, we held it up. Just while you guys are here, on the CHAM subdivision, Jeff and I worked this out, there's land on the left-hand side going up Guile Hill Road, which is developable, at that point, they would be required by the town, the planning board, to do some further development to enhance that road since.
Bring it to another lot.
Another level of, of use. He's got a, a pretty good situation there, there's, once those lots are developed, that's done in that area.
The only other.
So, you gotta think about that.
The town is the other beneficial area there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We, we have access to a piece of property for the town.
Have the turnarounds, how many he has go into the town property.
It's something, we really gotta talk about and think about this.
Okay.
Cause again, it was not clear enough in there.
Understood. Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
And, and if you look at, if you look at his last lot, the turnaround wouldn't be any good on that side of the road because it's too wet.
You mean his side?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, it's, the whole turnaround area would have to be reviewed. I have a little bit of experience out there, and it's a challenging piece of land, those house lots are challenging, to say the least.
Are there wetlands that cross, that are on either side that cause?
Yeah, it's pretty damp in there.
Okay.
Now, like you said, with today's equipment, you could probably do it, but it's gonna take a lot of work.
Okay, bring it back to the board, uh, we have Dan, we have police chief, you see here.
I invited him, I did not invite him, I asked him.
Don't need me anymore?
No, you're good, sir.
Hey Jeff, did you wanna stay for the town pound picture?
No, I'm good.
You got your picture in there? Thanks for your time last night.
No problem, my pleasure.
And the, the meeting we had thereafter, uh, we gotta, I gotta talk about it, we'll block tonight. No, it's a good thing, it's like, uh, if you get a moment, if you get a moment, I would.
You've got the paper.
He's got a copy of it?
Yeah, he, you guys have it in your inbox and he's got it.
Okay, I'll make sure you get a copy of it.
You saw that he wants to talk to you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good.
Good, okay. All right, um, I'm gonna go to, uh, town business mailbox items, since, uh, I'm not wasting any time.
Did Donna have anything for you?
Yeah, we've, uh, really revised our budget.
Yeah, it's actually included in your packets, but it, we can discuss it in their town business, but he's proud to share his changes on his budget, so.
All right, I understand the meeting with Lee was.
Very, very, very good, and we're finding other revenue streams that, uh, uh, we have perpetual care.
Mm-hmm.
And there's twenty-one thousand dollars have been in there since nineteen fifteen to two thousand, or, no, nineteen eighty-eight, I think, is what we figured the range was. But it's generated thirteen thousand dollars worth of interest. And we can tap that interest each year, but it's a formula of what our lawn maintenance and stone maintenance is, divided by the total number of graves, times the number of graves, uh, that gives us a, a dollar figure. And we've got four hundred and eighty-six, uh, perpetual care graves, so you take that times that amount, and that's how much they're being, uh, charged. And we can recover that each year from the, uh, trust, trustees, the trust fund, and then we'll give it back to you guys to put in the general fund because the town's already paying for it. So, it's, it's like, we'll do the legwork, you guys get the, you know, candy.
Well, it just offsets your budget, that's what it is, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so it offsets our budget. And, uh, what we've done is, uh, for Paige's Corner, we've, uh, encumbered, uh, the funds for the materials that Jeff's going to need, which is, uh, six thousand, sixty-eight hundred and change. And then we also have, uh, eleven hundred dollars on the benches, or something there, leftover from the thousand that we.
Which one is it?
Yeah. We bought five benches from Swinson's, and the thousand dollars that was donated for the cremains garden, uh, went toward that, and then, uh, we're, I believe, encumbering eleven hundred dollars, which should help, you know, cover the balance of it, plus, uh, delivery, setup, things along those lines, so.
So, your budget now is flat compared to last year?
Yeah, basically, we'll keep it flat.
So, is that what you wanna do, is, I've already utilized that thousand dollars, you want me to take eleven hundred out of your budget to, to this?
Right, and so, I think we had twenty-nine and change left over.
Yeah.
So, that would bring it down even more, so, basically, we'd have, uh, eleven hundred dollars, uh, twelve hundred dollars somewhere in there, left over.
So, the only thing that's not quite correct is the actual, it's twenty eighteen actual on, on this proposed budget.
Right.
Right.
So, we'll be on your funding markets in eight months, okay?
Okay, so that looks great, I'm, I'm glad we were able to work together today.
Yeah, well, just learning how to do it.
Hey, we all, we're all learning here too, so.
You know, it's all new territory.
Yeah. And the thing is, and also, you know, when you have like a, a forty percent increase one year, that's when voters kind of, why is it forty percent increase? And then we have to go through, you know, explain, explain, but we found a way of maintaining it on a level budget, which is a win-win for everybody.
Yeah, the other thing, um, make sure that's just an NPC construction, has the workforce to pour your cremation garden there.
Oh.
And dig it by hand. NPC construction, Justin has their number.
Oh, okay, good, I haven't talked to him.
He just did four cores for me.
Did he?
He has the manpower to do it by hand and come in and do it.
Oh, fantastic.
There won't be any running around or using somebody else, unbelievable company.
Good. As soon as we get the frost out of the ground, I will get them up here.
Is this your copy?
Uh, I got an extra one.
Okay, any last questions, so Donna?
Nope, nope.
Donna, thank you.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. You have a very merry Christmas.
You too, thank you.
After you're here. Get this thing over with, cause it's gonna rain tonight.
Hey, so, one more budget, can we just, it was in the mailbox, it was updated, um, uh, Tom, for a question on that too.
Yep, it's in your packet also.
What was revised on, that's the only item.
She, uh, re- redacted her request to get the, what is that called, a?
Record preservation camera.
Record preservation camera and setup, and she's requesting a hundred dollar increase to four hundred dollars. And Donna Dunn, who's involved with a lot of preservation, said that she would, um, initiate purchasing the whole setup for her own personal use, and then she would come back to the town and let us know whether it's advisable or recommended to invest in that equipment for the town's records.
That's all right.
We brought that up this week, you know, she brought it up, that, until we know how it works, and there's, uh, I guess you can u- use it for thirty days. So, she'll be able to tell if it's good or not, and, yeah, so make a recommendation.
Okay, so, uh, uh, nothing else has changed in there?
Just a hundred dollar increase on the preservation.
That's good, we'll put that in the file for, uh, Donna next. All right.
I think I recall Dan saying that he may have had a.
Training tonight?
Training, and he would attempt, and would make a, you know, stop by the, I think we have ten o'clock in this place.
Okay. Um, I got three, uh, some, three, uh, Eversource documents for pole licenses.
Yep, and I did have Jeff Crosby review those and approve them, so that has been done, you have to sign in.
Is that for the wetland pack?
Uh, no, I think those were just poles.
I noticed they sent a email through, limited on the wetland pack.
Yep, that has already been reviewed, but that doesn't require means.
The poles had already been put in my property.
Yeah. Yeah.
Now they're good, I think it's because it's gonna come into twenty nineteen, they're doing the ten thousand dollar max donation on wetlands.
Oh, donation, okay.
Yeah. Cause I know the poles are already installed on my property, I laughed when I saw that, so.
You did flag all three pages, right?
You did, thank you. Are there three or just two of them?
So, three or two, I can't recall, three, yeah.
What question?
This one to Bob?
So, you have to make a motion to appoint him?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. It says.
Agreed by mine.
Okay.
Okay, yep. She doesn't have much to read, does she? No, no, I'll go to the other.
No, I don't do so.
Yes.
No. You want?
What? Yeah, we all want at the end of the night, two of us stood.
Oh, yeah. Okay, I'd like to make a motion, um, that as a town, we, as a town of Dunbar, selectmen, dominate. Donna White, as a member of the Central New Hampshire Regional Planning Commission, to represent Dunbar.
I'll second your motion.
Hold on, any further discussion on this, hold on favor?
Uh, yeah.
Someone does.
Lee, you can sign this.
I don't know who signed, missed the signature, I can't tell. One, one of you didn't sign that, Mark.
Front one or the back one? Oh, great.
What do you mean you couldn't tell, you don't know how we signed it?
There you go.
Okay, we got a notification from Primex, one of our employees was denied a, uh, a payment for a medical bill, just be aware of it.
That one too?
All three of them, Melissa.
Is that it?
There's three of them.
Oh, okay, I got two of them.
Yeah, those two.
That's why.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, he only had two there, so I thought.
That was the last week, he took care of that last week.
Yeah, that brings up a point, my friend. On that, on that one that you just read.
Yes.
From Primex.
Yes.
We had some discussion, and we talked about people working hours beyond what are scheduled hours. And, you know, I did make a point that there's a safety factor, you know, that somebody should be there in case someone's working and they get hurt. Here again, is an individual that, time after time, when they're working, like they buy this themselves, get hurt. And I think that at some point in time, we need to look at establishing some hours, so that if there's gonna have to be coverage, a person's not alone, cause depending what could have happened, could have knocked himself out. You know, so, I, I mean, it's something to think about, cause, uh, standard hours are practiced most places, and, uh, a lot of times, department heads can manage the time when things have to be done. And so, that's just, just my, my case in point with that situation.
Well, I would be considering, I even think sometimes when we have employees working over eight hours a day, and I think it becomes, uh, after eight hours, people become fatigued.
It's something for you guys to go back and think about and, you know, see if we need to make some adjustments, cause, uh.
Be to the person.
You know, you're gonna get to a point that you're gonna have a significant cost to your workers' comp insurers, and that's borne by everyone that pays their taxes, cause the rates don't go down.
What do you think, Dave?
Well, this, this is, uh, it's a whole different subject than this, but I think we've gone over the hours before, that, you know, many companies require people to work twelve hours. Twelve-hour shifts are common everywhere.
They usually have more than one person working them, unless it's security or, or some, you know, in, in that, uh, arena, but.
But in a small, small town atmosphere, I don't know how you get away from that, cause we're like in between being large enough to have door coverage and.
I, I, I'll go one step further, I think we need to have the person discuss what is so vital about working that many hours earlier or that many hours later. Cause a lot of those things, I think you can schedule and manage within a workday, fairly close to the time when other employees are there.
I think we'd get an agreement with getting a breakdown, so that we know better.
So that we know better, or, you know, cause maybe we'll see something that they're not seeing.
And after the first of the year, we, you know, let the holidays go by, and then we'll revisit that and ask for a breakdown of their routine, so that we can understand their schedule better.
If it's cause, and this had nothing to do with the pickup, this was something completely different, but that could have been done, that could have been done, Dave, at a different time.
Don't you agree that after the first of the year, we could ask for a schedule?
Oh, no, no, I, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Is, we need at some point.
I don't know what all the hours to use were either, Bob, but I don't think any of us fully understand all the different hours.
But, and you know, if you were managing something, you would try to get that within the work schedule, if possible.
I just know I can't remember the last time I worked only eight hours, so. I know, like Leo probably worked a job where eight hours wasn't very possible many days as well, so, I have a hard time reading it fast.
Yeah, but the thing is, in, in a lot of areas, well, you work at the power plant, you work, you might be working twelve or fifteen hours. If you work at the APC, you're working twenty-four hours, if they keep you around the clock, but you have other people working with you. And there's somebody there, there's somebody competent, if somebody gets hurt, they can take care of it. And it's kind of difficult when no one's there and someone gets hurt, and heaven forbid, it isn't something that's more tragic, you know?
I don't, I don't mind having a breakdown, Bob, so we have a better understanding.
Just so we know, because we may say.
We might need to be able to limit some of the, some of the overrun hours.
So, we'll make that for January, latter part?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, um, I have another, I have an mailbox, Overlook Estates, they're, uh, they're, uh, they have a bond with us, as you recall, it's about a hundred fifty thousand dollars remaining bond for completion of the road. Jeff, I'm glad you walked in just now?
Maybe not.
Uh, but I believe, uh, there is some outstanding, I'm gonna quote the road agent, there are some outstanding things that still need to be done, but they're very minimal. Uh, uh, some grass seed, some shrubberies, and some landscaping type stuff, but nothing more than, let's say, I'm gonna estimate about ten to fifteen thousand dollars worth.
Yeah.
I think we're scheduled to hear him in the beginning, early part of January, right, they have the date.
Yeah, Bob is gonna schedule an appointment at some point.
Yeah, we already did.
So, we can put him on the agenda for January?
Yep.
And, uh, the thing is, uh, we're gonna, this probably withhold, withhold just a small amount of dollars.
He understands that.
Okay.
The only thing that I had a question with, and we can probably find out the information, was the bond invitation, I didn't know if it's all in it, but.
We could ask that too.
We'll find that out.
I'll get a report from, uh, the building department.
Yeah, so we checked out and then maybe get a dollar figure that you're happy with.
Yeah, something reasonable. Okay, um, I'm gonna, at this point, I'm not gonna wait for Dan's group, I'm gonna just move this to another meeting, in the next meeting.
Okay.
All right, then, uh, I have a comment, Leo.
Okay.
Okay, um, I liked the job they did at the, uh, town pound. That was, uh, I went up and checked it back.
Oh, you did go see?
Yeah, it was really nice, cleaned nice. Did a real good job in there.
We took every twig out of there.
Yeah, did a real good job. This spring, we're gonna visit, revisit that other shrub, right?
Yeah, the, he's actually gonna try and prune it. If it gets done or not, his wife is, says it may or may not get done, but he's, now that we've taken this step.
Right.
Uh, Dan, I think it is, right?
Mm-hmm.
Dan said that he stopped by that morning, and, uh, thanked us for not cutting it, and said that he was gonna try and get that pruned down to size.
Yeah, to try, try.
So I guess in the spring, we'll revisit it if it doesn't, doesn't appear to happen.
You know, sometimes you have to push people a little bit, you know?
And, and speaking of budgets, like we did tonight, uh, since Jeff's here and everybody's here, I have a picture of that town pound after we cleaned it up, that's what we're talking about, the town.
You have a before picture too?
No, I didn't take the before picture, but it, the...
I, I actually went out there too, and it looks great.
Yeah.
Just, I believe that's the second.
Here it is after.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
Nothing, there's no vegetation left.
I think the first time was way worse than that, because we cut a lot of stuff out.
Workers there, taking a picture. Those are the hogs reeds.
I'm the old kid on the line. I can, yeah. In a report, here we go.
Hot topics.
Push, push on it and forward it to yourself.
No, wait, wait, in other words, the title has more than, has more meaning than just a title.
Yeah. It's responsibility. Hot topics, so people, what you, what's going on there, you know?
Pull down on it. It'll come up in the top, right?
Okay.
But, no, one other thing.
Okay.
No, I was here last week for the, um, the, uh, budget by the library trustees, and it struck me kinda odd that they would come in and, and, you know, give you their budget, when they already spent some of the money for next year anyways, without anyone approving that.
What portion did they...
So that would be the insurance, because that's locked in now.
Yeah.
For next year. And, you know, and you guys just went through your insurance.
Well, we just locked our insurance in this.
I understand. So my point being, wouldn't it make sense if they kinda like got to you guys prior to that, to talk to?
Their, their employee doesn't follow our town...
I, I understand all that, and I understand they're totally separate, I understand that, but they're almost a hundred percent funded by the town taxpayers, right?
I would say.
Yeah.
Yeah, almost a hundred percent. So my point was just that, I would just think that they would approach you guys prior to crafting their budget, to be along the same lines, you know? It just kinda struck me as odd that they...
Did we ever send them the insurance information?
Because...
Which?
The, the library, for the library employee to follow our insurance.
I don't think...
I did, I did that to her. I said, that was a request of Katie McDonald?
Yes.
And she got that.
Prior to when we spoke with the woman from...
No.
No, no, they met, they came here, and then I, uh...
Okay, yeah, cause I, I did talk to, uh, Mary, and so that insurance that we have the town employees on is something that she might consider too, but she wants to sit in, I guess, when she comes. I think she wants to sit in...
Oh, with, with the plan?
With, with everybody, so she can get the education, because, uh, she...
That's free to...
She would like, she would like to know a little more about it.
Okay, now, just, you know, just like I said, it struck me odd that the money was already spent, and then they're coming to you to ask for the money. This didn't, didn't seem right to me, you know, so...
Sometimes they make assumptions, and they're assuming they're getting the same thing that the town has.
Yeah, how, how do you rectify that?
They didn't realize that we were changing over, you know?
Right, no, I understand, yeah. But, you know, ten and a half percent increase is a big increase, you know? And then next year could be way worse.
No, but really, the thing is, the, the budget came in lower the previous year because of...
Well, I'm not talking about the previous year, I'm talking about what went down last week.
They can still amend their plan today, and they would have to give thirty days' notice, and then...
Oh, they can amend their plan, okay.
Oh, yeah.
But chances are it won't happen. My, I guess my point is just that, why would they not contact Selectmen prior to crafting their budget? Because they are autonomous, but yet they are using all of our money.
Jeff chipped it. There's a, uh, but, uh, not to, uh, there's a, a line of supervision and control here. They have their own board of, uh, library trustees.
I agree, yeah.
And the thing is, uh, it's just like, they're almost as independent as a school board from us, almost.
Yeah.
Um, so the thing is, their library trustees make, they could pick a, uh, even a better plan if they wanted to.
I know, I know.
And the thing is, we could, we could challenge it, and, and the thing is, uh, but we really don't have, uh, jurisdiction over the library trustees.
I'm not saying you do.
Well, the thing is, they can, when you say spend the money, well, the thing is, they committed to one plan for one person.
Right, but they committed that money prior to getting it.
Well, we did too. We, we haven't got our money from the voters, and we had to commit to a plan for twenty nineteen.
Well, but that's what you're doing. You, you know, you can, you guys are in charge of your budget, so you can cover it, you can cover that.
Right.
But they can't, because if you say no, where do they get their money?
Okay, I hear you there. I, 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 point taken.
You know, that's all them getting at, is like, wouldn't it make sense to come before you guys, and then you can say, yeah, whatever, you know? Or you can say, gee, we looked into this plan here.
I think, I think going forward, we can make that improvement for next year in the budget process.
I mean, it just struck me funny that it went down that way. It's, it's kinda weird.
Yeah. Cause one of the things we looked at too, is the thing is, uh, we look at raises, for example, uh, for our employees. We wanna make sure that, you know, our, our employees are being treated fairly, and with respect to the school employees.
Yeah, no, no, I understand.
And so we look at other things too, and so, uh, I think going forward, we can actually have them maybe present early in the process and make sure they're...
Well, you know, maybe you can invite them for these ladies that come in to talk about the insurance next year.
Just maybe a...
Prior to, so that way they can see what's available too, because maybe, you know, they're just following the same path all the time, you know?
Yeah, I'll remember to do that next time, next year.
We can go forward, we can develop, go forward with that change.
Again, I'm, I'm not picking on anybody, all I'm saying is, I found it kinda odd the way it happens, you know, it's like, it doesn't, didn't make any sense to me.
Yep. So do it.
Okay, and that's it.
That's it. For our public comment, now.
Well, I gotta say it sometime, I'll say it now. Can you do an ad hoc, non-public thing, and you have...
Yeah, no, we are, and you were invited.
Am I invited?
Well, we're now, because it's a subject that you wanna question.
Okay, I need clarity.
You, I'm gonna try to give something.
Okay. He can't be...
No, no.
Just saying, not that I don't like you, Dave, it's not the case.
All right.
Cause I know you have an opinion.
I'm gonna close, uh, public comment, I'll bring it back to the board. I'm gonna start with Dave.
Um, I think I've already talked about the hog trees, I see we're sending the check out this week to Cohen, and take care of that. So, uh, I think the last thing on my agenda is trying to get, uh, notice back from Jeff Trexler, so I'll work on that quickly. That steel that we have, just keep holding on to it. Till Jeff gets back to me, Jeff Trexler. Yeah, no, that's fine, I just, sometimes we need steel for little projects.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I was just gonna say, you can't use it anywhere.
All I heard was five grand.
Ground rails.
I paid five grand from that, and covered funds, and then the rest came out of the billing.
I saw that.
That's how it had to be.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Bob to you.
No, I have nothing, I know.
Lee and Tom, I'm interested.
I don't have anything, but we are moving along nicely with the budget, I think. Next week, we have two more fairly big departments, fire and police. And then the next following week, I hope to have all my numbers, so that we can...
And, okay, then I'd like to make a motion, then we go into a non-public for, uh, RSA ninety-one dash alpha, colon three.